Workshop meeting call to order. We are on to item A, City Manager's Report on Issues Raised at Prior Council Meeting.
I don't have anything at this time, Melody.
Okay, we're on to item B, Items to be Presented. The first item to be presented is from Jason Harzold of T and M Associates, COVID-19 Risk Management Support Industrial Hygiene. Jason?
I've got unmuted, Melody, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And Melody, maybe you should take a roll call.
You want to do that through the workshop?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll do that now. Councilmember Chapman, here. Councilmember Clayton, here. Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn, here. Mayor Moore?
Here, thank you.
Jason, you should be unmuted at this point.
Hello, Mayor and Council, this is Jay Harzold from T and M Associates. Thank you for considering our proposal for COVID-19 assistance. I also have on this call our Health and Safety Internal Expert, T and M, who assisted with fashioning this proposal. Mr. Manzella, if it's all possible, I would like to introduce Ashley Insco. I can give you her dial-in number. I don't know if you have the ability to... Her number is 317-294-0086.
Got it, yep, she should be unmuted at this point.
I'm unmuted, thank you.
Okay, I will introduce Ashley Insco. She can take us through the proposal, should you have any questions.
Good evening, everybody. Ashley Insco and with T and M Associates, I'm Health and Safety Practice Lead for our Health and Safety Services. Meeting with Donna Abiero, we prepared a proposal for COVID-19 services for the city. And these services entail a risk assessment of the City Hall, the Public Works, and the Senior Center, a plan to address gaps identified during risk assessments, implementation of the plan based on city feedback, and then ongoing health and safety support through the end of this year, December 31st, 2020. How much more detail do you want me to present, Jason?
So, this is Donna. Jay, if you could just give an overview of what this proposal entails, why we're doing it, and what T and M's experience is in doing these types of assessments. And maybe I should just preface to the council beforehand, the reason why we're doing this is eventually we're going to need to open City Hall and all our other city facilities up. The CDC has given us a tremendous amount of guidance as to how we can open safely and what needs to get done. There's a tremendous amount of work that needs to get done, including retrofitting City Hall, our Police Department, our Senior Center, and DPW to allow for the public and for employees to work safely. So, this proposal by T and M will help us assess what needs to get done with our HVAC system, just general sanitation and guidance for our employees as we begin to open. Another note on the agenda tonight is an agreement with us and Monmouth County, and if approved, we will be submitting the cost of this assessment to the county for reimbursement under the CARES Act, which will be considered under our COVID relief, and it should be reimbursable. So, with that, Jay, just a quick summary of what I asked for.
Sure, so, we've broken down this proposal into four phases, A, B, C, and D. The first phase is, generally speaking, a risk assessment, which we would come in to all the designated facilities, identify the current conditions, and identify any potential risks and equipment or facility upgrades that would need to be installed or implemented in order for the public to safely and effectively interact with city employees. Also have city employees, as they interact with themselves, follow CDC guidelines, we will assist in that regard. Once we come out of that risk assessment phase, once we identify all of those items, we will move on to Phase B, which is the Infectious Disease Preparedness and Response. So, we'll take the risk assessment matrix and develop a detailed preparedness and response plan that you will have a hard document to follow that can be distributed among all city employees, almost like a handbook. And then in Phase C, we take all of the information we collected and prepared in A and B, and we begin implementing all of these response items, such as, you know, a greeting area in the central lobby of the City Hall that's protected by, you know, Plexiglas or other method. We recommend upgrades to the internal air circulation system, the HVAC system, to provide sanitation of the air as it's circulated through the system, and other measures, including, you know, face masks, social distancing, signage, documentation, you know, to hand out to the public, among other things. And then, as we move past that implementation phase, we enter into what we call an ongoing health and safety support phase. Because as we know, from the past three months, guidance from the CDC and other federal and state agencies is constantly in a state of flux. And we monitor them, all of these guidelines and provisions, on a daily and weekly basis. And we will provide, as needed, this Phase D is an as-needed item. We will provide guidance, training, answer any questions brought forth, either by the public or by city employees or city government. And we anticipate, we allotted for an approximation of, like, eight hours per week, ongoing support through the end of the year. So, that Item D is more of a budget estimate than it is a hard number. Once again, based on eight hours per week. So, if it's not, if our services are not needed for that item, or the item is, you know, if we wind up doing, you know, assisting the city for four hours a week, obviously, that budget estimate goes down.
Okay, thanks, Jay. So, just to reiterate what Jay said, so while their estimated cost is $84,500, $39,000 of that is going to be subject to as we need them. When this proposal came in initially, it was over $92,000, and Jay worked with us to reduce it down to the $84,500. So, with that, are there any questions from the council? Okay, thank you, Jay, thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Donna, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to the second presentation, the Presentation of a Multifamily Development for Block 4003, Lots 1, 2, 12, 13, 14, and 16, and 216, 3rd, and 215, 2nd Avenue, by Andy Karas for K-Hovenian.
Melody, just give me a second to unmute all the speakers.
Yep.
Sorry. I'm going to unmute Michelle. Michelle, you're unmuted, I'm going to go ahead and unmute Mr. Karas, too.
Okay, and I'm, okay, this is Michelle Alonso, the Director of Planning and Redevelopment for the City of Asbury Park. Very quickly, this is going to be a quick presentation for a new development in the Waterfront Development Area on 2nd and 3rd Avenue, to be developed by the development entity K-Hovenian. And Mr. Karas, Attorney for K-Hovenian, is going to lead this presentation. It will be a brief presentation.
Does everybody hear me? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Andy Karas, on behalf of K-Hovenian Holdings, New Jersey, LLC. As indicated, the property that we're dealing with is Block 4003, Lots 1, 2, and 16, which will be the Baltic proposed building, which will be 17 units. The other lots, the 12, 13, and 14, propose a building called Aegean with 27 units. Briefly, we have lots that total 28 acres, approximately 34,600 square feet. We are seeking to re-subdivide the property and create two separate lots for two independent condominium buildings. Units in the buildings will range from 742 square feet to 1,343 square feet. The Baltic will have 17 units and 26 parking spaces. The Aegean will have 27 units and 42 parking spaces. What we are proposing is to re-subdivide the property, so we have square footage, 15,000 square feet on the one site, so we don't need any plan amendments relative to that. We meet the requirements under the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan. The other area will be over 19,000 square feet, which will too meet the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan. As indicated in the report that was prepared by Ms. Alonso, the development that is being proposed meets the definition contained within the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan. In turn, no plan amendments, as I had indicated, or required. We will be seeking certain design waivers relative to the project. With that being said, I basically have two witnesses, that will be very quick. Mr. Robert Curley, who is our engineer, and Frank Minervini, our architect, to briefly go over what is being proposed, the site that we're dealing with, the topography, the parking, and the garage layout. Bob, are you on?
Andy, I wasn't able to find Bob's number.
Wait, no, Mike, Bob is on video, he's between Frank and Andy. You can see his video, he has a purple shirt on.
I just put my video on, so you can see me also, and put a face and a body to the person speaking. Bob, are you there?
No, I don't see Bob unmuted.
You're right. His says Galaxy S10E.
Ah, okay, there you go.
Okay.
Go ahead, Robert.
Okay, Bob, you're live. We still can't hear Bob. Bob might have self-muted himself. Let's move to Frank. Frank, are you available?
I am.
Okay, Frank, why don't you describe the project?
Sure, Michelle, is it possible to share my screen?
No, we have the slides here, you can just, it's the presentations that Andy and Carl had sent me, so they're all your slides, except one is Bob's. So, actually, Mike Menzo will just roll through the slides.
Okay, Mike, you can leave what you've got on there. This is a view of the building, of both buildings, as we look north down Berg. We're calling the buildings the Aegean and the Baltic. This one is the Aegean. As Andy said, we've got 27 units and 17 units. If possible, I'd like to go to the parking plan, which should be sheets, either parking plan, sheets, let's see, 30 would work. And the reason I want to bring that up specifically is because I want the council to know that we have designed the building, both buildings, in terms of the parking layout as efficiently as possible. So, in both cases, I think one more sheet, let's see, you're going the wrong way, I think.
Okay.
And either parking plan would work, so, there you go.
There you go.
This is the parking plan for the Baltic, and it is similar in design as to the Aegean. But what I wanted to show here, and want the council to note, is that in terms of the area we have and the footprint for both buildings, we have as much parking as possible. We could not squeeze another parking space in here. And on this one, the Baltic, there's a requirement of 26 parking spaces, and that's based on 1.5 per unit. We're providing one extra, 27. And on the Aegean, we are proposing, look at my notes, actually, 42 spaces where 41 is required. In both cases, we use extensively tandem parking spaces, so that it works out very well, but it's efficient, it meets all the backup requirements, and I don't think we could squeeze another parking space in here. So, that's important, I think, for the council to know. Mike, if you can go back to any of the renderings, perhaps the first one we had?
And Frank, with that, we have maximized the amount of units that we can get into the two buildings based upon our limitations with parking, am I correct?
That's correct. If we introduced another unit in either building, we would not meet the parking requirement. So, this is where we started, and through the TRC process, and we attended two meetings, this building has taken, it has, many changes have been made in terms of the aesthetics. So, we've introduced more articulation based on some comments from the TRC. I think the biggest comment, the biggest change in terms of the comments was the change in colors. Initially, both buildings were medium gray to a dark gray. Now, we've got a combination of whites and tans, and we think that in terms of coastal architectures, especially contemporary coastal architecture, this really works, and it'll fit in well. We think aesthetically, it's very, very pleasing. We've gone a long way to try and make what could have been perceived as a large facade, break them down in terms of their mass by articulation, by changes in color and changes in materials, as well as...
Mike, will you just go through? Frank, I don't mean to interrupt, I just, yes, great, Mike.
So, this is a colored elevation view, looking east on Berg, so you can see the Baltic on the left, the Aegean on the right, and the existing residential home in the middle. So, that's what they'll look like together. Engineering side plane?
I was going to say, I'm going to interject, did we get Bob Curley on? No, we still don't have Bob.
He's unmuted. Bob, are you on?
No, I'm just going to quickly say that this is the layout for the two buildings, and on this slide, you can also see the preservation of the on-street parking. Next slide? And back to Frank's elevation.
Michelle, can I interrupt you one second?
Yes, of course.
And again, it's not you, it's all of us, myself included. When anybody speaks, because we have 64 public out there, they should say who they are.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, of course, I will.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to turn, this is Michelle Alonso, I'm going to turn it back over to Frank Minervini, the architect.
So, we're looking at a 2nd Avenue view. It's kind of a dusk shot, showing our change in materials, the articulation that I mentioned. Also, we've got an abundance of landscaping at the point where the building meets the ground. It creates a softer view. Brian Lefour, landscape architect, has designed this, we think, very nicely. Okay, Mike? And we can scroll through these drawings, I don't think that any of these are much different from the renderings, in terms of telling the story. You can scroll through these rather quickly unless there's questions about a specific drawing, or materials. But again, there was a major change from this meeting, two meetings at the TRC. We've really softened the look, and I think made it more contextual and better conforms to the waterfront plan requirements.
That is, and there are certain, as we look through Ms. Alonso's report, there are certain zoning considerations in there. There are certain design requirements under the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan that we have not met, we'll be seeking waivers before the planning board relative to those specific design requirements. There are also a number of comments and recommendations that we'll address before the planning board, hopefully, when we get there, with regards to the garage door, and a number of other comments that were made in the report.
Yeah, this is Frank Minervini. There were comments at the second TRC meeting, which we will address for planning board, they have yet to be addressed, simple things as the colors of the garage door, or the size of the garage door, things like that. Some particular dimensions within the parking garage that we can adjust. They will all be addressed for the application of the planning board, pardon me.
Yeah, issues with the garden plantings, roof details for up on the roof, the amenities that'll be provided up there, those will all be addressed before the planning board.
Correct.
Okay, again, Andy?
Oh, I'm sorry, that was Andy Karas.
Yeah, you got to say who you are, because I know who you are, other people know who you are, but the majority don't know, so, again, I know...
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, yeah.
No need to apologize, it's new to all of us, and I'd do the same thing, but thank you.
This is Frank Minervini, again, and to keep it simple, I think that's the extent of the presentation. Happy, of course, to answer questions in detail if needed.
Mr. Curley, Bob, are you on the phone? This is Andy Karas again. He was unmuted, Andy, sorry.
He's muted now, from what I can see.
Yeah, he's shown as muted, Ms. Michelle Alonso saying that.
This is Mike Menzola, he may have muted himself. Hold on.
Well, this is Michelle Alonso, Mr. Menzola tries to figure out the technology. Do any of the council members have any questions for what they've seen so far?
John Moore, one question?
Sure.
Does the city lose any on-street parking spots with new curb cuts?
No, I was going to have Mr. Curley go through that, but to summarize what his testimony would be, this is Andy Karas again, I'm sorry. With regard to existing, there are existing illegal parking spaces that are striped on 2nd Avenue, Berg, and 3rd Avenue. Once all the infrastructure improvements are completed, if there is no development on the site, there would be 17 parking spaces. Once the infrastructure improvements are completed, assuming that this project is developed, we will have 20 on-street parking spaces, so we will not be losing any legal parking spaces on the street.
Thank you.
Mr. Curley, are you unmuted now? He's unmuted, but I still don't hear him.
All right, if I can just run through what the testimony would be, that was based upon, again, Andy Karas again, what was presented before the TRC, what we're dealing with on this site is a difficult site, there are certain limitations we have on the site. One of the limitations is that we have grade that far exceeds the street level. On the Baltic site, you're about 16.4 in terms of the average grade. In the Aegean site, you're about 16.5, so you're way above existing the elevations that you have on the street, and that's the same throughout the entire area. So, that is what we are dealing with. One of the issues that we're dealing with also is the water table. We have a very high water table, so we can, we're limited in terms of how far down we can go with regard to our parking garage. With those limitations, however, we've designed it where the parking garage is not more than, is more than 50% below grade. It is more than 50% below grade, which makes it plan compliant under the Waterfront Redevelopment Plan. When we look at page 92, how they define a story. They define it as the floor, the first story cannot be more than six feet above grade of the ground around the building. Because of the existing elevation, we meet within the definition of a story, so we do not need any type of plan amendment. Where the garage is situated, where the first story begins, we completely comply with the plan requirements, as indicated by Ms. Alonso in her report. In terms of the park, and I just went through that, we're not going to lose any legal parking space on the street. As you can see from the plan, there is one additional parking space, and that required that are being provided in the two buildings.
This is Michelle Alonso, interrupting, just because I want to make sure, did that answer your question, John?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Michelle Alonso speaking. Michelle Alonso speaking, Mr. Karas, is there anything else you want to quickly touch on before we end your presentation?
No, I think we've covered just about all of it, all the main issues with regard to the proposed application. We were twice before the TRC, significant amount of revisions were made, took, taken into account the comments that were made before the TRC. And we ask that this plan move forward and go before the planning board.
Thank you, Michelle Alonso speaking.
And if the council has no other questions, Mr. Karas and everybody else, Mr. Curley, thank you for the presentation, and we will take it, and wish all of you great health.
Thank you so much, same to you all.
Thank you.
Glad to carry you on the phone.
Michelle Alonso speaking. Mr. Menzola, tell us when you have unmuted the presenter.
I am trying to unmute the presenter, okay, there we go.
Hey, I was going, Michelle Alonso speaking. Ms. Harkrow, could you, Ms. Clerk, could you announce the agenda?
Sure. Sure, we're on to the third presentation, the Presentation of 1201 Memorial Drive, Block 203, Lot 5, for a proposed multifamily development by Stephen Goen for Douglas Development Corporation, and seeking a redevelopment plan designation for the property. Mr. Goen, are you ready?
Hi, everyone, yes, hi, everyone, Steve Goen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, Steve Goen, I'm from the law firm Giordano-Halleran and Cisla. I'm here representing Douglas Development Corporation. The project that we are, the property that we're talking about tonight is 1201 Memorial Drive, Lot 5 in Block 203. It's located in the city's B-zone, the newly adopted B-zone. And the purpose of our presentation tonight is that we have requested that the property be made subject to a redevelopment plan, specifically for this property, to allow for a multifamily residential development. The council may remember, we were before you several months ago with a different proposal for this property. The original proposal, the building has been owned for some time by Douglas Development, through an entity called Jamal's Braverman Building, LLC. And the building's been vacant for a number of years, it's dilapidated. It was, our original proposal, when we first came to the council and presented before you, to adaptively reuse the existing building. It's a former warehouse, industrial-type building, and the plan was to reuse that, to have a residential multifamily development, including 54 residential units, 46 market rate, and eight affordable. After we met with you and presented that plan, it was determined, a couple of things were determined. One, the parking that we were proposing at that time was only a one-to-one ratio, just because of the existing site constraints, and the building, as it existed then, was going to be difficult to include more than one-to-one parking for the 54 units. And also, we took another look at the building itself and determined, basically, that it had no real architectural significance. And it was really going to be more... no real architectural significance, and it was really going to be more expensive to do an adaptive reuse of that building than it would be to knock the building down and build something new, which is gonna be hopefully a much nicer product, and something that's a lot better looking than simply reusing the old industrial building. So what we have here is a new proposal for a new project. This project would include a hundred and eight residential units, as shown on the plans that you're looking at now. Of those hundred and eight units, the original proposal that we came in for this project was to have a fifteen percent affordable housing set aside. I understand that the council and the city has adopted some new ordinance requirements, and maybe looking towards a twenty percent affordable housing set aside, which we would be able to accommodate. I just think that the documents in front of you were contemplating fifteen percent, but if twenty percent is going to be the requirement, we could accommodate that. We would be requesting, however, a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, long-term tax exemption, specifically to help with the affordable housing set aside, particularly if it's going to be twenty percent. As opposed to the prior version of this project, which you had seen, where we were proposing basically a one-to-one parking ratio, this project is going to have significantly more parking. We're proposing a hundred and fifty-six parking spaces, which for all the units we're proposing, a hundred and eight is about a one-to-five ratio. If you take into account the parking relief that is provided under the city's ordinances for affordable units, it ends up being about a one-to-seven ratio for parking at a fifteen percent set aside, and about a one-to-eight ratio at a twenty percent set aside. So significantly more parking provided with this proposal than the prior proposal, almost actually double the amount of parking, double the amount of units, but also double the amount of parking. And that is incorporated in a draft redevelopment plan that we have worked with Michelle to put together. This project, the idea of having a redevelopment plan for this property is to allow the multifamily use, whereas in the new B-zone, only a limited number of multifamily units are permitted per site, and the redevelopment plan would allow this project as of right. It incorporates standards for setbacks and parking, all those types of things, including the use of high-quality building materials, sustainability requirements, the requirement of a redevelopment agreement with the city, design standards for lighting, landscaping, and the like, all of which you'd typically see in a redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan, as we have put it together in draft form, is consistent with the city's master plan, as well as those of the county and the state of New Jersey, and we think this would be a good project, and it would be a good use for the site, and a good opportunity to redevelop the site and bring something that we hope is a beautiful new project to the city, as opposed to what's there now, which is, like I said, a dilapidated old vacant industrial building. And we're looking forward to working with the city, making this project a success. I do have my client architect and engineer on the phone. I think we're not quite yet at the point of needing a separate presentation from each one of them, but if there are specific questions from the council that we can answer, we're all here and available and happy to answer questions.
This is Michelle Alonso. Before we jump to council questions, I just want you to hit on some items that may not have been clear in the presentation. How many units of the, are proposed overall?
There's a hundred and eight, with this version of the project, there's a hundred and eight proposed. The redevelopment plan that we drafted permits a maximum of a hundred and ten, but this plan shows a hundred and eight.
And this is Michelle Alonso, as everyone can see on the screen, there's the breakdown of the units. It would be a mix of studio, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and for the affordables, there would be three-bedroom units.
Correct. Sorry, this is Steve Goen answering these questions, but that's correct, Michelle, thank you.
This is Michelle Alonso. Does any of the council members have any questions about the brief presentation that was just presented?
So, this is Ainee Chapman. I just wanna ask if the affordable is gonna be spread out through the three-bedroom, the two-bedroom, the one-bedroom, and the studios?
Will they be spread out throughout the different floors and throughout the project? This is Steve Goen. Is that the question? The answer is yes.
And so there will be, there'll be opportunities for affordable housing for each of the size units that you'll have.
This is Steve Goen, correct. The affordable units, there's going to be a mix of one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. In fact, likely, the only three bedrooms for this project will be affordable units, and the rest will be a mix of studios, one bedroom, and two bedrooms for market rate. But yes.
This is, this is Michelle Alonso is gonna jump in. The studios will not be affordable units because we would receive no co-credit for studios.
Gotcha, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Yes, Steve Goen again, so just to clarify, the affordable units will be one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom. The studios would be market rate only.
Okay, thank you.
This is Michelle Alonso again. Do any other council members have any questions about this project?
John Moore, I'll ask one, I think I know the answer, and I appreciate, nice presentation, and sir, if you want your two other experts to say anything, we're not short for time, that's up to you. So, one of the original plans called for to make your parking requirements was to put perpendicular parking on Memorial Drive in front of the building, which I was totally against, so that's going away, not all your parking is inside the complex itself.
I would prefer that my professionals only speak when spoken to, if you don't mind, so I'll try to handle it myself, but yes, that's, we'll save their presentation for the planning board. So, assuming we get there. So, yes, the current proposal is to have all the parking underneath the proposed residential units, so there's only going to be parking inside the actual lot itself, and as you stated, under the prior proposal, we had parking along, I believe, both Memorial Drive and potentially on the adjacent side street as well, but no longer. Now, it's going to be self-contained, and as I mentioned, with this version of the project, we can get a much better parking ratio by knocking the building down and having basically a first-floor parking deck to accommodate all those spaces.
This is Michelle Alonso. I'm gonna jump in just to say, this project will provide a hundred and fifty-four parking spaces for a hundred and eight units.
All self-contained in the project.
Correct.
Thank you.
And Mayor, this is Fred Raffetto, City Attorney, speaking. Perhaps, Michelle, you could just summarize for the mayor and council what the next step would be in this process if the council is amenable to the revised proposal from the applicant.
Certainly, this is Michelle Alonso speaking. So, the next step would be for the council to review a draft redevelopment plan that I have written, that is in draft form, and it outlines the development regulations for what you see here. Density, number of parking spaces, height, bulk standards, design standards, and also the affordable housing component of twenty percent affordable housing. I am able to draft a redevelopment plan for this area because the city is an overall area in need of rehabilitation that allows the municipality to carve out redevelopment plans where they think that the property needs rehabilitation, which this one meets the criteria. So the council would review it, and they would refer it to the planning board under resolution. The planning board will review it for conformity with the master plan and give their input as well, and then would return to council to be adopted as an ordinance. This would be a superseding redevelopment plan, unlike the last one we did for a development specific project, which was an overlay. So, a superseding redevelopment plan means that the zoning for the B district for the site is eliminated for the site, and the site will have its own particularly, particular tailor-made zoning for the site, and that the developer would be locked into doing that exact zoning. Was that clear? Was I clear enough?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Fred, and thank you, Michelle. John Moore, I'm sorry. I think as far as like asking for a thirty-year pilot or abatement or anything, the devil's in the details, as much as like Amy and Yvonne have been like our two lead people in affordable housing, you know, if it's like, if it's not good, it's gonna go down, so I think maybe if you wanna set up a committee with those two to look at the numbers before it gets to the entire council, I'm gonna wanna see the numbers before I agree on anything.
This is Michelle Alonso. I see that as a fair requirement. Mr. Goen, are you amenable to that, that we first negotiate and discuss the numbers that could be considered for a tax abatement before we launch into the redevelopment plan?
Steve Goen, yes, that's fine, that makes sense to me, and frankly, I think from our perspective, Mr. Mayor, we would wanna do the same thing, so it makes sense, and you know, obviously, the goal here, particularly with, you know, with any redevelopment project, particularly here, where we are providing affordable housing and we are asking for the financial benefit of a long-term tax exemption, we would wanna come up with something that works for both sides. That's the only way that it's going to work, is if we work something out where we work together, and so be happy to do that, and Michelle, if you wanna coordinate a committee that we can meet with and start trading some numbers back and forth, we can put those together for you and try to work out, try to work out some deal that makes sense for everybody.
This is Michelle Alonso, yes, I will do that.
And thank you, sir, and thank you, John, I'm sorry, John Moore again, I do the same thing. Thank you, sir, and thank you, Michelle, and again, my bad, and of course, Donna's got to be part of those discussions.
Of course. This is Michelle Alonso. Before we close this topic, any last questions, comments, concerns from the council?
Moore again, it looks like a very good project, I'm impressed with it, and again, it's the devil's in the details, I think we can work it out, and if we can, we'll go forward, if we can't, whatever, we'll fix it. Again, thank you for your time, thank you for investing in Asbury Park, and let's make it work, and let's get some affordable housing in Asbury Park, thank you.
Steve Goen again, so I know my client's on the phone, and he does pay me to figure these things out, so, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I hope, hopefully, I can earn my money, and we can, we can work something out together. So I appreciate everyone's time, that's all we really wanna present tonight, and looking forward to getting started with you. Take care.
Thank you.
Next.
Okay, we are on to presentation number four, an amendment to the Star's redevelopment plan, presented by Michelle Alonso, the Director of Planning and Redevelopment.
This is Michelle Alonso. Good evening, everyone, members of council, city manager, Mr. Raffetto, Mr. Manzola. Tonight, I'm presenting to you an amendment to the Star's, the Strategic Target Area Rebuilding Spirit Redevelopment Plan. The reason we are coming tonight before you for an amendment to this redevelopment plan is this redevelopment plan expires in July. This is one of the first and one of the older redevelopment plans in the city. Originally, Springwood Avenue was part of this plan until the city carved out Springwood Avenue to have its own redevelopment plan. So, we're, this is why we're revisiting this plan, we, besides just re-adopting it, myself and my staff, Mark Siegel, we re-examined the zoning for this plan area, and we decided to improve, tweak it, and improvement, improve it. Next slide. This is the area that we're talking about. You see Springwood Avenue to the north, and to the south is the Neptune border, to the west is the Neptune border, and this plan ends at Atkins Avenue to the east. It's primarily Ivy Place, Ridge Avenue, DeWitt Avenue, Bourne Avenue, Avenue A and Atkins Avenue, south of Springwood Avenue. The most redevelopment activity we've seen in the last twenty years is DeWitt Avenue with Habitat for Humanity and Interfaith, neighbors developing affordable for-sale housing on that block. Next slide. I'm quickly gonna go through the highlights of the plan with, and what we're amending. The biggest thing that we are proposing is to eliminate the three-family townhouse design. The way this redevelopment plan is written, it's written for a housing prototype that is not typical to Asbury Park. It's typical to a more, more dense urban environment than this neighborhood, than this neighborhood is. The prevailing housing type in this neighborhood is a frame-dwelling, two-and-a-half-story, single-family and two-family. So the zoning that we're proposing basically goes back to that, so we've eliminated the attached, single-family, two-family home, AKA a townhouse, which is not a prevailing housing type in this neighborhood, or for a good chunk of Asbury Park, and the three-family townhouse. Next slide. We tweaked the bulk standard to reflect more of the bulk standards that you're going to be seeing next month for when we do the wholesale zoning amendments for the city. Again, some of the bulk standard for the Star's redevelopment plan didn't make any sense, like it permitted a height that was three stories rather than two and a half, that it had, and that we tweaked the setbacks a little bit, but we still kept some of the requirements a little bit more liberal for the small lot sizes that we encounter in this neighborhood. Next slide. Also, part of the Star's redevelopment plan, there was an amendment to the Star's plan that put in green requirements. We tweaked these to, first of all, eliminate the commercial, because when this plan was, when these elements in this plan was written, it still had Springwood Avenue in it. That's another thing I failed to say with this amendment, we've eliminated any reference to Springwood Avenue and commercial development. While the Springwood Avenue plan took care of that, us doing in the Star's redevelopment plan cleans it up and lessens any confusion. So the proposed green requirements would be to encourage solar panels, green roofs, stormwater recharging, solar-powered lighting, the use of high-efficiency fixtures, building products with recycled content, Energy Star, and that facade penetration be at least ten percent of the surface area. These are all green requirements that work well for one- and two-family homes. Next slide. Parking requirements. We revise the parking to reflect the parking that is gonna come forward with the, in the parking, not the parking, the zoning amendment, because basically, the, there was a big exemption for parking in the Star's redevelopment plan area, that didn't make sense, and it also permitted front yard parking, which is currently prohibited throughout the city. So we brought those parking requirements in line with, again, what's more typical for the neighborhood and what we wanna see in Asbury Park. A single-family residential dwelling would be two spaces, a two-family- A single-family residential dwelling would be two spaces, a two-family residential dwelling is three spaces, basically a one point five per unit. And then we say all their land uses shall comply with the requirements of the Asbury Park Land Development Ordinance. Next slide. So, this is like the, my visual to explain every, what I just spoke about in the technical terms. The houses to the left is the, the prototype that could be built with the new zoning that we propose, we're proposing for this plan area. The house on the right is what could be currently built under the current zoning, which is again, a more, a denser, more urban model with parking in the front, three stories tall, like a stacked townhouse. Mike, do I name more? And then this is the, also the, the townho- home prototype that currently can be built in the plan that we're eliminating because again, it's, it's skinny, it's tall, it's dense and truthfully, most of the lots in this plan area can't support this type of development because they're too small. So, that's my conclusion of my brief presentation of the plan amendments. The, the next step for, for this plan will be at, at a following meeting for the council by resolution to refer to the planning board. The planning board will review it, make their recommendations and then it would be forwarded back to council to be adopted as an ordinance with two readings. Are there any questions for me?
Yeah, John Moore, uh, just one question. Uh, I know I've been here forever, uh, here when Star's started. Uh, when you did this, did, was there any public input asked for and received?
Indirectly, directly no, indirectly yes. The zoning that we proposed is the zoning, or it reflects the zoning that you're gonna see next month as part of the zoning amendments as part of the master plan. So, this new zoning would be more aligned with the rest of the zoning for the city and what the master plan outlines of what the zoning should be for this neighborhood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ian, I'm sorry, Moore again. No, he's seen no other questions and somebody's waving their hands. Michael, uh, let's shut it down and go to the regular meeting.
Okay. No more questions for Michelle? Okay. You want to, we're on to, uh, review of agenda items for the regular meeting?
Okay. Um, do we want to just skip this as we're gonna go right into the regular meeting if you want me to run through the resolutions?
Time, timeout a second. Maybe we should do roll call again, take a moment of silence for everybody being here, there, anywhere and then do the pledge of allegiance and then go to the meeting.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah. We'll go right, right into the regular meeting?
Yeah, go into the regular meeting, Mel, yeah.
All right.
Do you have a motion?
Regular meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Other people attending the meeting, we have the city manager, John Abiero, the city attorney, Frederick Raffetto. We have Michael Manzello, the deputy city manager, director of transportation. We will now have a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster and the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2020 and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to public participation. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Kendall, move it.
Second, I am checking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Meeting's open to the public. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak and I will give you a warning when there is one Okay, I am calling on six one four nine, six one four nine. Please state your name and address for the record.
Myra Campbell, Madison Avenue, Asbury Park. May I speak now?
Go ahead, Myra.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, acting mayor and council. Um, I'd like to recognize the passing of COVID-19 recently of Mrs. Olive Elizabeth Hoteling, member of Assemblyman Eric Hoteling on May 11th and this year, and Elizabeth Fullop, grandmother of Mayor Steve Fullop of Jersey City, who passed away last week. Please take a moment and say a prayer or take a moment of silence to reflect upon those losses and all who passed away from COVID-19. In December 2014, I sat on the dais and at some point stated, "I can't breathe, I can't breathe." Some knew what I was talking about and others didn't. I repeated the same, uh, uh, I repeated the same type of murder that killed Eric Gardner in Staten Island took place yesterday with the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis. Um, I'm gonna make this short tonight. I have, uh, the following questions for the council. Does the city have an emergency crisis plan in place? If so, is there a copy that the public, uh, can go to to get it? Number two, does the city have an outreach plan to communicate with those that are not tech savvy? Who is organizing and coordinating the groups that are helping those in our community? How are PPE supplies being distributed to those who can't obtain them? Has the city put together a multi-diverse task force to address COVID-19 in the city? And have you informed the highly targeted groups about?
One minute left.
Testing, isolation and tracing, uh, contact. I do have something to say, uh, about HIPAA. Be aware that HIPAA is, uh, and I'm a state licensed, uh, health and life insurance agent. It's only pertains to personal information. There is a bill before the senate right now, uh, Senate Bill S2357. I also must say, don't do what Jim Jones Jr. and the White House has done, is suggested that people ingest or take Clorox bleach to cure COVID-19. I have more questions, but the next time I get a chance to speak, I will ask those questions. I am available for anybody in the city that wants my help in addressing any of the issues that I brought up.
Mine's up.
Thank you very much.
Uh, it's been Myra, it's John Moore. Uh, thank you for your questions. Uh, as far as like, I, I missed part of it because those small interruptions. Is, is there a multi-diverse task force at this point in time? No. Are we considering it? Yes. Uh, as far as all your, do we have an emergency crisis plan? Do we have other plans? That's where I kind of lost the conversation. Uh, I, I'll let the city manager answer those. And, and Myra, Myra, if you have any questions, again, I give everybody my home phone number, seven three two nine eight eight seven nine one five, cell phone nine oh eight four eight nine one one eight seven, something like that. Uh, I'll correct it. Donna, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Myra, for your questions. So, um, our director of social services, Doug Schultz, has been reaching out to our community, um, and assisting them with obtaining PPEs and other resources during this time. Um, we have plans in place for, for every crisis, not just specifically this pandemic and I can certainly share them with you, um, offline. I can have Doug reach out to you if you'd like. Um, and the mayor talked about that. Um, I, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Let me just give the correct cell phone number because I never tie it myself, nine oh eight four eight nine one eight eight seven.
Okay, we finished with Myra?
Yep.
Okay, we are now moving on to three three five zero, three three five zero. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Ernest McNolley, 400 Dale Lake Drive, Asbury Park in Jersey. At the end of last virtual meeting, the mayor proceeded to ask that I attack him. I don't, I'm not interested in attacking anybody and I don't appreciate the after-armed comments attacking me. Uh, I'd like to know what the mayor is doing about the arrest of Scott Anzalone, the partner in Words Bookstore for ten and a half years for pedophilia, uh, arrested by the Asbury Park Police, who that word bookstore is intimately related with the mayor, council, fundraising, dinner table, everything with children in there and what's being done about it? I don't see anything and it, and the local newspapers won't cover it. And then we have the new lawsuit of, uh, Camille Warwick, uh, Asbury Police Officer, a, a big lawsuit, right? Uh, that being called Taliban and a terrorist. He's a Pakistani-American Muslim, fifteen years Asbury Police. He should have to be called a Taliban and a terrorist, right? Now, it's a big lawsuit and I like how the city manager and the mayor are, "Oh, we don't have lawsuits. Are you kidding me? Your own last deputy chief sued because they wouldn't make him a chief because he was, because he was white. Well, look what you have now. Everybody's white. Uh, Kelso, uh, Thompson, white's white. Uh, uh, who's the other one? Uh, uh, Cresio's white, 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 everybody. Hussein's white, everybody's white. How come the taxpayers had to pay Salerno eighty-five thousand dollars because he didn't get promoted because he was white? What's going on with this city? You don't tell anybody anything. All the crime, corruption going on here, bad developer deals, people like Michelle Alonso espousing about being a planner. What kind of planner? She's destroying this city, piece by piece. What else can I?
One minute left.
What else can I say? And then you said I brought up names. Oh, they're all good people. Let me repeat them for you, okay? Scott Anzalone, uh, uh, Garrett Iverson, Eugene Delo, Warren Hall, Judy Accarino, Peter Delisa, Debbie Delisa, how about Bruno? How about, uh, how about Andy Feldman living in his basement, right? You're gonna call all these people to allow them to go onto Facebook and say things about me and my family and then you say, "Don't attack them, attack me." You got some nerve, Mayor. You got some nerve. And I don't want your home cellphone. Why don't you get an office phone and an office email and an office, like a regular mayor? Did I leave anything out? And do something about those city officials driving our building into bankruptcy, Zylan Farrenbach, criminals, look what they're doing to Sand Tender and Amy.
Time's up.
Oh, Mr. McNolley, I'm gonna try to respond, but you talk so fast, I can't write down all the notes. Uh, the governor's much better at it than I am. As far as this mayor and no mayor has anything to do with any criminal investigations. Uh, the second question, we do not discuss any pending litigations as per our attorneys. Uh, again, you just continue to like criticize and make false allegations against city employees, other people, be they friends, not friends, some were friends, some are not friends. And again, I ask you, sir, have you no decency because goddamn you do not and that's the last time, later.
We're now moving on to zero three three two. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Doug McQueen for Wesley Court, uh, here in Asbury Park and I'm calling this evening on behalf of the Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition. Uh, once again, we want to urge the city to develop the best opportunities possible to provide open space for downtown businesses as things start to reopen. Um, one of the best options to do that would be to o- open Cookman Avenue and, or possibly even some of the surrounding blocks, open those streets to people, uh, use space that is currently dedicated to car movement and car storage and instead use that for people and businesses that want to socially distance. Something along the lines of an open-air dining or an open-air market type of downtown area. Um, sure, there's gonna be obstacles to doing that, um, but to counter those obstacles, I think the best thing you could do would be, uh, to look at the examples of other cities both around the world and now even in New Jersey that are taking action to create space to help their businesses recover. Um, along those same lines, we'd also urge you to talk to businesses. Uh, the Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition, just in the last week and a half, we've talked to over a dozen businesses, uh, business or business owners directly and they're all interested in seeing this happen. Uh, in addition, we've used social media to reach out and got an overwhelmingly positive response from the public. So, to sum up, creating public space for people to social distance is incredibly important, um, and even more so to our businesses downtown. Um, speaking of public space, I just want to suggest, uh, personally, this, that restricting public space is prob-
One minute left.
Thank you. Restricting public space is probably one of the worst things we could do and for example, um, right now, I'm actually sitting here reading off of my notes on this phone call, sitting on a bench in an undisclosed location that has yellow police tape on it because someone thought that it was important to go around town and restrict public space to people by taping off benches. Not only is it not working, but it sends the wrong message and encourages the wrong behavior. So, um, I hope we can do everything we can to create more space for social distancing and that we make the best decisions possible. Thanks a lot.
Uh, hey Doug, thank you very, very much. It's John Moore, I'm sorry. Uh, believe me, we're working on many different scenarios or options as far as what you're suggesting and I think if Michael Manzella and you can get together, I know Michael's squashed and Donna's squashed with time, uh, believe me, we're working on it. Uh, it's, but the main thing is, we don't know what we can do until the governor says what we can do. So, we have like, again, ten options. Uh, and then we will, when the governor says what he says we can do, we will pivot and make our ten options into one, hopefully, good decision for the city of Asbury Park and closing streets is gonna be one of them. It's just how we do it and where we do it is, again, up to him and again, main thing is when and it's how many, twenty-five percent, fifty percent, all the parameters which you know and everything. As far as taping off the benches, hey Doug, we have to do that because the governor's saying, no, no, nobody should be like sitting in the same, we, we cannot go around and like clean off every bench. That's why we removed them from the boardwalk until they say we can put them back up. Uh, I know it's not nice, I know it's not fair, but we're, we're going under the governor's guidelines and we're trying to do our best and you've been great, uh, ESTC's been great, uh, everybody's been great. Suggestions appreciated. Talk to Manzella and, uh, he will not tell you exactly what we're thinking about, but give us some suggestions and we will incorporate them if we can. Again, thank you for all you're doing to help us.
And can I just do one, one quick follow-up to that as well, Doug? Because I, I've been talking to Polly and I, I'm not sure that you know, but this weekend, this council got an overwhelming number of calls of, uh, some establishments not, certainly not following the spirit of the carryout to-go drinks. So what we were seeing were people, um, getting to-go drinks with a straw and then sitting along our benches and sidewalks and getting drunk. So, uh, I think that this council is completely open to closing down streets and, and helping businesses in every way that we possibly can. And what we really need to do is put some pressure on some of our downtown businesses who are certainly violating the spirit of the carryout alcohol um, and, and requiring our police this weekend to actually give out summonses for openly drinking in public. So, so the taping of the benches was a result of some bad apples in downtown this weekend. Was, was it the, the perfect, uh, uh, response? Maybe not. But the number of calls, emails and text messages that everyone on this council got on the behaviors of people who may have drank too many carryouts downtown, you're, you're seeing the results of that when you're sitting on that bench.
Thank you. Next.
We'll now move on to five one two four, five one two four. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Rita Moran, O'Eight Avenue. Uh, wanna start with risk, uh, risk management? That's a pretty risky deal and I don't think it's necessary. I think you sanitize City Hall and you're gonna put the employees through all this nonsense and pay eighty-four thousand dollars besides? I don't think so. The other thing about that, the buildings that are going up on Berg, there's a house in between, is that what I understand? What are they gonna do with that house? Leave it there and then build two huge buildings on both sides of it? And across the street or one family too? And then on Memorial Drive, uh, John, you better remember the ripple effect. When Fort Avenue gets a hundred new apartments, they'll be going up and down Fort Avenue. The other thing I wanted to talk about, I did a little research on the city of Asbury Park. And I know you tried your best with the budget, but there's other things to look at. I think you have two hundred, according to the record, you have two hundred and thirty-eight employees. A hundred and two of those make over a hundred thousand dollars, plus their benefits. Out of the hundred and two, there's ninety-six that work in the police department and the fire department. Now, these are really bad statistics for a city that's one little mile. You have to look into those things. And I know the union contracts bind you to them, but you have to look into them too. If I remember correctly, the fire department got five hundred dollars for clothes. I think you should try to stop that. And if they need a uniform, we'll buy it. But they get five hundred dollars apiece. And I know there's over fifty firemen. So there's lots of things that you could look at to curb this budget. But I think you're trying to do a good job, but I hope it works.
One minute left.
But I want you to really think about those projects and risk management. I don't think you need risk management. I pe- I think, I think the employees know what to do. Maybe you have to rearrange some seats in the council chambers for all of us. But other than that, why do you need risk management? And I remember that word. That's an old word. We had it years ago. We had risk management years ago. And I, I just think you better think about it. About clean streets. Be nice if everybody swept their sidewalk and washed their windows and everybody had the same morning. How about thinking about that? Make it look better. And that's all I have to say.
Uh, thank you, Rita. Let me, uh, I tried to write quick. Uh, the House on Berg, uh, yes, it's being built around. As far as Memorial Drive, thank you. Um, point noted, point taken. As far as salaries, hey Rita, just don't check Asbury. Check, like, check Monmouth County, check Ocean County, check everybody else as far as police, fire, DPW, everything. I don't think we're that much out of line of anything. Uh, again, like, it's not nineteen eighty, it's two thousand and twenty. So yes, salaries are a lot higher. Um, a- as far as the risk management, I think the definition you and I grew up with as far as risk management is a different definition of what we're being asked for today as far as like, it's not about, it's about not only the employees, the people coming to City Hall. Uh, where, right now, with this COVID nineteen, everything, yes. And even the county's saying they're gonna do all their buildings and like make it safe for people in the future. And if we can get this money for free through the COVID nineteen, the hundred and eight million dollars given to the county, uh, it would be a shame not to take it. At least get the plan in place and then we'll go from there. And Rita, I just wish you, uh, safe health. And I thank you for all you do.
We're now moving on to four eight six zero, four eight six zero. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, um, this is Maureen Nevin. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Three DL Court. Okay, thank you. I have, um, quite a few, so I'm gonna just run through quickly so I don't run out of time. Um, okay, see, um, I found it very difficult to see a lot of the, um, visuals, the, um, attachments on the plan. Um, some of them were beautiful. Some of them were so small, um, that even if I printed them out, I wasn't gonna be able to read them. Uh, I'm, I wonder if there's something we can do about that. I mean, the agenda package was two hundred and twenty-six pages. I mean, I can't print all that out. Um, and I'd like to know what, what you suggest that the, um, the residents do. Um, the, uh, resolution that was supposed to be reposted, uh, two, uh, twenty twenty-one five nine for PPE, um, are we not buying through the NJIIF? I have a question about that. I don't see it on the agenda. If you could, um, explain whether it's already been reposted and, um, and passed. Uh, the, uh, twenty twenty-one seventy-seven authorizing a professional services contract to T and M. My question about that is, um, is this apart from the firm's staff retainer fees? Because they have been added to our staff, uh, T and M. Maybe it's, uh, maybe they've got a very narrow definition of that relationship. Um, and that was, let me see here, okay. Um, on the cross streets, uh, for twelve oh one Memorial Drive, if you could tell us what those cross streets are, it would be easier for us to, uh, picture it. Um, the affordable units, um, are they getting the parking spaces? Um, that was a hundred and fifty-four spaces for a hundred and eight units. And I believe that, um-
One minute left.
I, yeah, I believe that there's only eight affordable units. Um, and they're looking for a longer, uh, tax exemption period. Um, I would like to question, um, if that's really a good deal. Um, and the stars, again, the please, the actual streets bordering this section. Um, because I didn't think that that was a good, um, a good description. I, I think that was missing. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, Maureen, I'm gonna try and I'm gonna turn some over to Donna. As far as the visuals, I agree with you. And I was even gonna say, mm, can you enlarge them? I, I, I couldn't read the small print. Uh, T and M is the city appointed engineer, so that's why we go to them. Cross streets twelve oh one, uh, is, the cross streets are fourth and fifth. Uh, as far as your question, as far as how many affordable units, it's a hundred and eight units and times twenty percent, to me, that comes out to like twenty point something. I have to be rounded up, so it would be twenty-one. And as far as the other questions, uh, I'm gonna turn them over to Donna.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Maureen. And Mike, Michelle is still on the phone. If you can unmute her. Um, she could speak to the cross streets because I don't have that in front of me right now. Um, but regarding, let me see my other notes here. Um, T and M, the mayor spoke about, um, the PPEs through the JIF have been ordered. I wasn't quite sure what your question was. Um, I think the cost for that was about twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, and that was done through our JIF as a group of all of us in the consortium to order them. And, um, I think that was it. Michelle, are, are you unmuted?
Yes. Can, is this Michelle Alonso? Can everyone hear me?
Yes, Michelle.
Yeah. Okay, first I, I just, I'll give a little tip about viewing, um, the slides. They're all on the website. If you go onto the website under Council Agenda Packet, all the presentations that you saw here tonight are there. They're in PDF format and you can just use the Zoom function, um, in, in the Adobe, um, PDF reader to, to hone in on different parts of, of the plan. Uh, saying that, you know, tonight was a little bit of a learning experience using the, you know, the technology for these presentations. And we know what we need for the next time. Um, probably use the Zoom function ourselves to hone in in diff- different elements of the plan, uh, when we're speaking. As far as the parking, um, out, assignments to units for the Memorial Drive project, that is something that we can, we will discuss in negotiation under a redevelopment agreement. Uh, who gets assigned what spot and how that works. And then I believe you had another question about them, oh, uh, for the Star's redevelopment plan. I did have a map up on the screen and I said the streets that were involved. It's south of Springwood Avenue, um, to the Neptune border, Neptune border to the west and Atkins Avenue to the east. It's basically DeWitt, i- it's basically Ridge to Atkins, south of Springwood Avenue. That's the Star's redevelopment plan. And again, it's also on the website. And I think there was one more question, uh, regarding Memorial Drive, but I can't remember what it is.
The property is located between fourth and fifth Avenue. This is Mike Manzella, sorry.
Oh, was that the question? Okay, it's located between fourth and fifth Avenue and Memorial Drive.
Any more comments, Maureen?
Next.
Okay, we are moving on to nine seven four two. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Sylvia. Sylvia from the, uh, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce. Um, I hope everybody's doing well and thank you for, um, letting me speak. Um, I wanted to do, um, just a couple of things. One is acknowledge the passing of Joan Flatley, who, um, was the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce in the late eighties and, and through the nineties. She passed away at ninety-one years old earlier this month and, um, continues to be the bar that, um, all chamber directors, um, try to reach. She was a woman who promoted commerce in Asbury Park when there was very, there were very few businesses at the time. And, um, and it was very difficult to get attention, um, at that time. And so she did a magnificent job. Um, things started, um, through a lot of her efforts. And she continued to come into our office even through December of twenty nineteen, stuffing invoice envelopes. And it was just an indomitable spirit who will be missed. Um, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. Uh, also, I wanted to, um, just announce that we have, um, we have launched a Boardwalk radio station broadcast. And I wanted to thank Donna Viera, um, who, um, was unbelievably helpful. That is not a thing that just flips the light on and we go in and start. But it, it takes a lot of, of, um, activity. And, um, and we were able to, um, uh, continue that sponsorship with New Jersey Natural Gas being our partner. And thankfully so for, for them because I think this year more than ever, we're gonna need the ability to communicate to, um, visitors who will be coming here, uh, letting them know what is going on, what they can do, where they can be, um, and what is available to them. And, um, I think having the consistency of that partnership is very important.
One minute remaining.
The Beach Utility, um, for helping us out. Um, Chris Semiano at Madison Marquette is unbelievable. Um, and we did also launch, um, a BeVocal By Local campaign from the chamber, um, where we have a page on our website and, um, people can come in and see, um, uh, daily, uh, changes of who's open, what they're offering. Um, Senator Gopal and Freeholder Tom Arnone have been unbelievably helpful. Um, it looks like the county tourism is gonna help the chamber procure that, that, um, uh, big bulletin board poster up on, um, uh, on Asbury Avenue that enters Asbury Park for four weeks for our BeVocal By Local campaign. And that should be a tremendous help. Um, thank you to all of you. Stay safe and I appreciate everything that you've done.
That is John Moore. Sylvia, thank you very, very much. And, uh, again, I know you lost people very close to you. So again, our condolences to anybody and everybody who's lost people that they know. Uh, you're absolutely right. Uh, God bless Tom Hayes and New Jersey Natural Gas. Uh, as far as we have, uh, I always get it wrong, the point ninety-four, point three. I mean, so it, it's a great thing to get out there like, hey, don't come to Asbury today, we're sold out. Or come to Asbury today, we're not sold out. I believe the county has, I know the county started a, a website, I think, and Eileen's gonna correct me. I think it's "No Before You Go." Thank you, Eileen. The county's gonna be saying, hey, don't come to Asbury Park today, go to Belmar because they're not sold out. Go to Asbury Park today because, uh, Madison Square is sold out. So, uh, the county's been fantastic. Uh, uh, the chamber's been fantastic. Sylvia got up a new logo which everybody loved, which we deeply appreciate. And again, uh, can get, the big thing we have is again, Tom Hayes, New Jersey Natural Gas. Thank you, Sylvia, for getting that to us. Uh, and Jackie before you. And it's just, uh, great to get us like, come today.
Not seeing any more hands raised. Do I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Oh, wait a minute, there is another hand. I'm sorry. I am calling upon six nine four two. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's, it's Carrie Butch from DL Lake Drive. And I do wanna, um, say that I was very excited to see COVID on the agenda because I've been pushing you guys to educate the community on COVID and to do some communication around COVID for the entire community. And I'm happy to help. And I know a lot of folks that are happy to help with that and are helping with that. But I think we need to, um, I was, I, I didn't get clarity until I, I spoke with Eileen this morning about how it was focused on city buildings, city administration. And, you know, I think that that's great and you have to do it. And I appreciate you guys doing it. But when you're, when you're developing grants, I also think we should be developing grants a little bit further to be educating the entire community on it. I do think you're doing your job when you, when you are doing risk assessments for the City Hall and for the facilities and, and that kind of thing. But if we could go a little bit further, um, I'd like you to honor the request that we've made six weeks ago to do a community kind of Teletown Hall specifically on COVID. I know things are changing on a, very quickly. And I know that you're getting, um, your, a lot of your attention is going to dealing with what's happening on Cookman, with people coming in and what's happening on the waterfront with people coming in. And I appreciate that. But I also think that we need to concentrate on educating folks here, in addition. So, um, that's, I just wanted to say that. And I hope that you could, you will be scheduling something soon and, and, um, maybe putting together, coordinating some folks that are, are capable of getting, um, questions and words out.
One minute remaining.
Okay, one more minute. All right. I don't wanna, but I appreciate you in advance for putting that together. In addition, I just wanted to say that it's funny that the Houses of Worship was taken out of the Star's plan because that plan was created in a house of worship. The Star's redevelopment plan was started about twenty-five years ago in a church basement. Hazel Samuels, at the time, was head of community development. She got some funding from the Charles Stewart Mott Foundation and- and a bunch of, a group of church folk created that plan. So when I saw that Houses of Worship were taken out, when I saw that three family homes were taken out, I thought, wow, you know, how interesting. So maybe we should, we should, we should talk about that. Um, but again, you know, I do appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. I do feel like you do a great job when we pick up the phone and call you. I'm just hoping that we create a, a way of everybody hearing everybody's concerns and educating everyone. So thank you.
Hey, Carrie, uh, John, John Moore, I'm sorry. Uh, a lot of people recently have said, hey, John, why, why is Carrie busting back? You two are good friends. And like Carrie's not busting my back. Carrie's very concerned, same as I am. And, uh, I appreciate everything she tells me. And she sent me some great articles. I've sent her some good articles as far as like, be it, uh, Singapore, be it South Korea, as far as coming back a couple of weeks ago. Uh, as far as, like, we agree on many issues. It's just how we, like, figure it out to work together. We will work together. And again, as far as hotspots, again, the county has been very negligent as far as giving us any information. And people want to say this, that, and everything. But again, they keep on, and you can talk to Amy Quinn, call her. She has been relentless. She's called, uh, Mr. Fitzgerald, the Chief, uh, Lawyer for the County. And we're, we're getting nowhere. We've had people put in many Oprah requests, uh, uh, people we all know and they've been turned down also. And they're like, hey, yeah, Counsel, you're right. We can't get it either. Well, we wouldn't fib to anybody. If we can't get it, they can't get it. So again, on the county. Uh, uh, Carrie, I definitely agree with you and I think Michelle can answer that either tonight or down the road and you're going to have all side conversations as far as, uh, yeah. I would have liked more public input as far as the Stars Program because you were here and I was here when it started, uh, as far as Houses of Worships and Three Family Houses. So, uh, again, it's not going to be passed tonight. There's nothing on the agenda. So, uh, more conversation, the better the conversation. And again, Carrie, uh, everybody else out there that has good ideas, keep them coming because again, I don't give a damn what anybody's saying. The Governor's winging it, the county's winging it, we're winging it. And any suggestions, we will take and we will look into. And Carrie, thank you.
Not seeing any other hands raised. Do I have a motion to close the meeting to the public? Move to close, Eileen Chapman. Second.
Second, Kendall.
Second.
Okay.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Meeting closed to the public. I will respectfully ask the Count, Mayor and Council, do we want to do, uh, matters from City Council before we move on to the minutes?
Kendall, I don't have anything to say. Dad.
Well, uh, Moore, and I have very little to say, but let's give everybody a shot.
Okay, um, we are, matters from Council. Um, Councilmember Chapman?
Um, sure. So I, I, I want to thank really all of the city departments who quickly got our beachfront and our entire city ready to open on short notice for the summer season. I know it was challenging this year with all of the restrictions and the new guidelines. And everyone worked collaboratively and quickly to ensure that, uh, the health and safety of our residents, business and, uh, visitors was met by, um, putting in, you know, some new restrictions that were needed uh, in order to get ourselves open. Um, and also I just want to remind everybody that there's free transportation for Asbury Park residents during the COVID-19 pandemic. Thanks to a grant from the New Jersey Health Initiative. EZ Ride offers free rides to Asbury Park residents to go to medical appointments or to go grocery shopping for as long as the funding is available. And for information or to schedule a ride, uh, go to www.cityofasburypark.com/free ride. Um, that's all. Everyone just stay, safe and stay healthy out there.
Councilmember Clayton?
Uh, yes. This weekend, uh, Friday, May 29th and Saturday, May 30th, Coastal Habitat for Humanity is having a food drive. They're collecting non-perishable items, including but not limited to canned foods, uh, juice boxes, peanut butter, et cetera. And it's a, a drive up and drop off. So if you're out and you're available and you can do it between the hours of 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM outside their offices and their, their offices at 11:05 Memorial Drive. And, and just a reminder, Census 2020 is here. We're having a very low turnout. It is so important that everyone be counted. And, and it's really easy. If you have any questions, just go to Census 2020 and they can refer you. It's in a number of different languages and you can even do it over the phone. And last, I, I just want to send out prayers and condolences to everyone who has lost family, friends, any loved ones in this pandemic that we're suffering through. And everyone be safe. Thank you.
Councilmember Kendall?
Uh, yes. One of the things I, I really have in my heart to tell people is that, um, don't take this lightly because things are changing for, um, changing for the good. I see so many people running around, walking around, walking the dogs, which is a good thing. Or just riding their bikes or just hiking, but they don't have no mask on. They don't have no gloves, they don't have no mask. And they stop and have a conversation. And I said, oh my God, they are not taking this serious enough. So I'm asking the people in Asbury to stay safe, continue doing what you're doing. But the ones that's not, if you ignore them, tell them, please. Could you stay ten, six feet apart and could you keep your mask on, please? I don't think that hurts their feelings, you're helping them. That's it.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
I have nothing.
Mayor Moore?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, again, I, I urge everybody, please run out in public, wear a mask. When you're in public, please think of everybody next to you. Like, they could get it, they may have it, anything, and practice those things. We are not through this yet. We're, we're, as Yvonne said last meeting, we're not out of the woods. Uh, uh, again, please, anybody with any ideas, Doug had good ideas, any other people had good ideas, like, send them to us. Paul, give them to Mike, give them to Donna. Uh, we have the best staff in the world. Give them to our police chief, give them to our fire chief, give them to OEM Director. Um, and everything, the staff enough. Uh, this is new and trying times for all of us and nobody knows the answer. As far, anybody as far as making negative, uh, comments about individuals, city employees, go to hell.
Okay, we are on to minutes. We are on to the minutes of the regular meeting of April 30th. And I have the regular meeting minutes of May 13th. Do I have a motion? And please identify yourself.
Kendall, move it.
Yvonne Clayton, second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to individual resolutions. We have Resolution 2020-169, which is a resolution approving the payment of bill. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Second, Chapman.
We now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to Resolution 2020-170, a resolution authorizing the mayor and municipal clerk to execute the fiscal year 2021 to 2023 agreement with Monmouth County for the cooperative participation in the Home Investment Partnership Program pursuant to the Interlocal Service Act. Do I have a motion?
Quinn, move it.
Clayton, second.
Now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-171, a resolution requesting permission for the dedication by rider for revenue derived from donations required by NJSA 48:5-29. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Clayton, second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-172, a resolution authorizing a professional service contract to the Rogers Group for police training. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Kendall, move. Kendall, second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-173, which is a resolution awarding a contract to Millennium Communication Group for renewal of a genetic advantage. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Clayton, second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution 2020-174, a resolution authorizing the purchase of Mutanic Alarms for City Hall. Do I have a motion?
Kendall, move it.
Quinn, second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-175, which is a resolution appointing Michael Del Rey as the Tax Assessor for the City of Asbury Park. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Move on.
Uh, Mayor Moore?
Moore, yes.
Melody, Melody? Melody, this is Donna. Amy's calling in, she got disconnected.
Okay.
And, and if I, if I could just say, this is, you know, since we're doing this virtually, when we appoint, uh, new prof-, uh, new, new staff to positions, we normally have a, a swearing in. So I just wanted to say on, um, my behalf and the employees to congratulate Michael on his, um, appointment to assessor and also to, um, thank Eric Aviart for his service to the City of Asbury Park. Um, he is moving on to a different role within the city. Um, so we're, we're lucky enough to retain both of these fine young men, um, as their, um, in their, uh, positions. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
We're on to Resolution 2020-176, which is a resolution entering into an agreement with Monmouth County Municipal Coronavirus Relief Fund Program Reimbursement Agreement. Do I have a motion?
I have no move. Okay, and get the move and get the second. But should we wait? And I have no problem as long, I just want Amy to be part of the meeting.
Yeah.
Let's give a couple of minutes to get her back in.
Okay, okay. Um, did I have a motion?
Yes. Clayton, move it.
And a second?
Kendall, a second.
Okay, we'll wait for, um, Deputy Mayor Quinn.
And we'll wait a minute or two. And Michael, if Donna, if you can get back in. If not, we'll go ahead.
All right, I'll let her know that we're waiting.
While we're wait, waiting, does anyone have any, um, comments about, uh, 2020-176, a resolution entering into an agreement with Monmouth County Municipal Coronavirus Relief Fund Program Reimbursement Agreement?
I don't, I do not. And if she's not in within a minute, move forward.
Okay. Someone let me know when a minute's up, I'll lose track.
My call.
I'm, I'm watching the clock, I'm watching the clock. Uh, I think we've got her.
Hi, sorry, sorry, it's Amy.
Okay, Amy, we are on to Resolution 2020-176, a resolution entering into an agreement with Monmouth County Municipal Coronavirus Relief Fund Program Reimbursement Agreement. We had a motion and a second. We're now moving on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-177, a resolution authorizing a professional service contract to T, to T and M Associates for COVID-19 risk management support. Do I have a motion?
Moore moves it.
Second, Quinn.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on to Second Reading Public Hearing. We have 2020-Ordinance 2020-18, an ordinance establishing a restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons at a property located at 1507 Bond Street in the City of Asbury Park and amending and supplementing Section 7-36 entitled Handicapped Parking, Chapter 7, Traffic of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park in Jersey. Do I have a motion to open the public on 2020-18?
Quinn, move to open.
Eileen Chapman, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now open. Sure.
Of course, then. Question, as much as it's self-explanatory, Fred, you want to give like a 10-second overview of it? So if somebody says, what the hell is this?
Uh, basically, when someone who has a handicap, um, requests a parking space dedicated, uh, to persons with disabilities, the Police Department the police department will do a review, um, of the request and make a recommendation to the mayor and council. And in this case, that review was undertaken. And it relates to a spot located adjacent to fifteen oh seven Bond Street. And the recommendation from law enforcement was to move forward to create the handicap parking spot. And that's what this ordinance would effectuate.
Okay. Uh, the meeting is now open to the public. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on the phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have three, I'm sorry, uh, please keep your comments only to the ordinance being presented for public hearing. I am calling upon three three five zero. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, yeah, Ernest Magnoli, four in the Deal Lake Drive, five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey, the sandpinder. So we're talking about the handicap, uh, ordinance here to review?
Yes.
Correct, correct? Okay. So, uh, I guess due to someone, uh, inquiring or maybe complaining, you're reviewing only one, one application or all applications?
The application is for one spot that was deemed correct by the police department.
Team correct. Is it, is it for an individual or for, is it for, you don't do for one person anymore. You do for all handicapped. Am I correct?
I, I apologize for one space for a person's applicant.
Well, I, I had one for the sandpinder and you approved it. But then you made it available to everyone and the super in my building.
Mr. Magnoli, that's a different question.
So I'm asking a question. So is it for one person only or for the public?
No.
Handicapped?
No, no.
It's for the public.
Correct, Fred. Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm, I'm sorry.
This is Mike Manzelli. You are correct, Mr. Mayor. It is, it is for the public. It's not dedicated to any one person.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, so the essence of this, well, is, we're, we're in an ordinance now, right? You may vote on this tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Is, is about one space and it's located where?
Do you have your screen up?
No, sir, I don't. You know why? I just came from a long branch meeting. So I, trying to do as many meetings as I can.
No problem, Mr. Manzella or Mr. Attorney.
I heard you say five oh nine something avenue. Where is that?
Fifteen oh seven Bond Street.
Fifteen oh seven Bond. So is that near, uh, the eyeball bar?
It's between Sixth and Seventh Avenue, Mr. Magnoli, on the west side of the street.
Oh, it's down the other end of town. Okay. So is it located in, in front of a residence?
Uh, yes, it is.
Oh, okay. So I, I guess it would be similar to the, an application that I made. And should you approve it, uh, it's, it's gonna be for the public. But hopefully that applicant will get to use it also. And this will not, what you're voting on or considering is not affecting any other ones in effect right now?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay. That's it. Only question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Not seeing any other hands raised. Motion to close 2018 to the public.
More, more motion to close.
Quinn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Do I have a motion to adopt 2020-18?
Quinn, move to adopt.
Kendall, second.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other comments before we move to adjournment?
Move to adjourn, Quinn.
Nope, like one comment. Sorry, I'd be short. As much as, uh, Donna, the city manager acknowledged, uh, Eric and Michael, who are both fantastic, no question about it, uh, I'd be remiss if I did not say, the past two months have been holy heck. And our administration, be it Donna, be it Michael, be all the department heads, have been fantastic. And believe me, public, we have fought. They wanted to kill me yesterday because I was Moore, saying, ah, how about this, how about that, anything. But believe me, this city of Asbury Park is doing the best we can do for everybody. And when Doug McQueen and other people say, how about this? How about that? That's what we're looking for. We're not looking for like people after the fact saying, you screwed this up, you screwed that up. But give us suggestions and we will pivot. We will do everything. But again, our staff, especially Donna, under dire circumstances, especially dealing with me, I can never thank my staff enough. That's my opinion. And I'll go to my grave with it. Thank you.
Mayor Moore? Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
Kendall.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Meeting adjourned.
Everybody stay safe.